So chapter thirty eight under signs. So if you compare what we have now to the newer version. Well, it's in a different spot where all the red stuff is crossed out on the new. Page thirty eight seventy three. One thing Sam mentioned at the last meeting, I figured I'd bring it up real quick is. In the chapter, like defining inside the chapter, not just in definitions, what certain signs are. We currently actually have that in the chapter. Maybe just adding it back in, but if you look at your packets for. What you're given, she actually, I printed off what she sent me. I didn't print off what she sent me, I'm sorry. That was taken out, I don't see it on the news, but if you look in our current chapter thirty of page thirty eight twenty six. You'll see that there are definitions within that. Part of the book, of the, of the chapter. So that being said, do we want to add that back into it?
Thirty eight twenty six.
Yeah, thirty eight twenty six is the current.
Thirty eight point five point five point two.
So it's thirty eight twenty six of our actual month draft, the current one, and then it's page, well, it's thirty eight seventy. Sixty six is where it starts. The draft. And in the draft. There are not definitions included. In the draft. So just, you guys want to add them back in? To get thirty eight twenty six. Yes, so you see how the definitions are included within the chapter?
Yeah.
So the new version, the draft, new version that's in the beginning does include that. And one of Sam's ideas was, she, she didn't realize that the, what we currently have has it. But one of her ideas was to have that in there, so maybe we should. Put it back in there, is what. We don't find it necessary. Pretty much everything that she's printed off is what we already have in here.
What does that do with first?
It's just putting the definitions within the chapter and not in the back. All right there. So taking what is on. Page thirty eight twenty six, thirty eight twenty seven and thirty eight twenty eight, under the definitions and putting it into. Draft chapter thirty eight.
Does she find anything wrong with this?
So in our new, so this is what we currently are using, but in the draft, that's not in the draft. I don't know, that's what I was asking, you want to go ahead and put that back into the draft?
I think probably you should be, yeah, so sign external illuminated, assignment is like, so that's just a definition.
That's just a definition.
So is with the new dark code, right?
Dark sky.
Is there illumination number?
So there is in the draft.
Eight seventy something.
Maybe it's the old.
Thirty eight seventy three. What's up?
Yeah.
Just having all fun?
So thirty eight seventy three.
Very sounds, oh, they not be the base.
We see where the women was.
Is there one though?
I got it somewhere, yeah. I remember.
I mean, animal.
Remember it was right above where they said, why does it take out the Christmas, the white lights? That was on site.
All it says is where it is external illuminated sign shall be lighted from sources that are shielded from the street or adjoining properties with no exposure.
That's all crushed out, so that's not going to, but under lighting. It says lighting emitting brightness less than eighteen hundred.
How bright is eighteen?
Wes told us when we actually had that meeting, discussed a couple of years ago, I remember, yeah.
Yeah, that much, huh? How much is the bowl now? I mean, I'm just saying, like, that's, that's, that's a pretty bright sign, right?
Yeah, but this is under lighting in general, but that would, but you can't have an internally lit sign, it would just be externally.
That was internally lit.
For another discussion.
I. So. So what you're saying is take this, it's already written.
And just add the definitions into the draft.
But how do we get to the illumination? Cause that's the only thing I have with signs, is the illumination. I think every commercial piece of property should have its business shingle hanging out and illuminated if it wants to do so.
So.
However, I don't think it should be blinding light.
So under lighting, it's, let's say, you can't have anything over eighteen hundred. I don't remember the discussion, but I know we talked about all these different levels.
So that's lighting, is that just?
That's exterior lighting.
Should we just put that in the side thing to say? Or no, just.
We can.
Cause I've probably told officer, I read through this whole thing, and somebody said, I want to put a spotlight there, I would.
Where is externe- that's. So on, on page thirty eight seventy nine of the draft, under point three. We could add what it says under. Lighting, we could put lighting emitting brightness less than the eighteen hundred limits. Vote on that during the meeting, but.
What was the page?
Thirty eight seventy nine, number three. We can put no source. Of illumination. Exceed. Eighteen hundred. Does that sound good?
But, yes, but. How bright is eighteen? What's that called? Was it forty watt light bulb?
Eighteen is a hundred watt.
Hundred watt, there you go. Internally. Doesn't matter if it's outside, inside, whatever, that's what it omits.
So that we didn't do watts, because LED, well, it's different for LED lights and all that, so eighteen hundred.
What is LED, cause everybody's.
Seventeen.
Seventeen watts. Well, you should probably put that in there, hundred watt, seventeen. LED, and then at least you have an idea, cause I would have a clue what eighteen thousand, which is at least that would put it in language terms. Right, right, but no, I, that's fine. Yeah, I just think something should be in there, cause. Well, I don't know what the bowl name is, maybe it's not, but it just, that sign seems to be, and I'm getting older, so my eyes don't like that anyways, but.
Should I put in parentheses, leave the eighteen hundred limits, put in parentheses, incandescent bulb, hundred watt LED bulb seventeen?
Yeah, that's okay, yeah, yeah. You write that. That covers all bases, right? Well, it just makes it simple.
I don't know if there's any other ball of something.
Because if it goes to CEO, CEO is gonna go, okay, well, how many, he's gonna do the same thing, look it up, figure out what it is.
Right now, what about the definitions, add those back in?
Yes.
Add the definitions back in.
Why really didn't you know?
Is there anything else in signs?
I. I really haven't read so far on signs, just. Makes sense. Well, it's like you said, there's all different, the bank savings bank, does anybody know if they ever came full permit to do all that?
I do not know.
No, I think they lost. I think they missed the mark. Oh, Benny, well.
But it was brought up that maybe it, the original sign was there before. I don't know that.
Before I step up through.
Are you guys ready to move on to accessory dwellings?
Sure.
Uh?
Sure. We have accessories.
So I gave you guys.
So just one question, so what is the, what is, what is gonna be the big? Argument they're trying to push through when I'm making sure. That move there. The, the exterior siding and all that, little lights, signs, yeah, I think, I think they're gonna comply with that night.
Or it was, so the, they had presented a sign that was completely outdated, even by the old. And she worked with Bailey about getting it to be within that. I can pull the, I can pull it.
No, that's fine, I just, no, I think what they've decided though, is I think they're gonna comply with our new lighting on this, cause I was a part of the. The fundraiser to gather the money to do that project, and the one gripe they had was the sign, but I think they've accepted it. From my understanding. Okay, cause I was. Caused by somebody a couple of weeks ago about. Sign order says. Well, I mean, you gotta, I mean, I don't wanna, I mean, I don't think, we don't need any neon lights. We just don't. You know what I mean? Maybe if they wanted to run them on the night of the show and it was.
That's on maintenance.
No.
That wasn't presented.
I mean, let's, I can read the sign if it's a hundred watt or three hundred watt. The three hundred watt's gonna aggravate me, the hundred watt's not, and then you're in a residential, you're not, you're in a commercial zone. But there's residences that live in apartments on Main Street, and they don't, I don't want to get that. No, I think they're in, I think they're. They're right for the moment, but I think they're okay with it. Okay, so you gave us.
So. Yeah, last meeting I gave you the actual ordinance and. The ECD. In your packets, Mark handed this out at the Port of Selectmen planning board, none of those meetings? This is just a town of York ordinance. Ever, I haven't read this, I don't know. It's not in the beginning, it's already not, it says that a accessory dwelling unit is a small apartment.
So the state, I wish I had thought of it, so the state said. That we can do up to two accessory dwelling units with a maximum square footage of four hundred square feet per unit.
That is not in there. The state statute right now. For accessory dwellings, they have, we have to allow at least one accessory dwelling, minimal lot size is a hundred and ninety square feet. And we can actually impose a maximum size.
Okay, so where did I read that?
Is it one of the proposed changes or?
Well, it's gonna be a test, and this is the whole, this is the whole LED.
Well, this is the actual, yeah, this is the actual.
Right. I thought in there said.
So a lot with LED dwelling unit already on it can have two units, if it is not within a designated growth area under section.
Right, and then it says land with one existing, it can be up to two additional dwellings, choose one, an apartment or attached unit within a beach.
But this is saying it's only, only one is required.
As part of what the state wants us to.
Yeah, I would go by what this is.
Oh, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't understand why this says a lot without a dwelling unit already on it can have four units, if it is either within a, doesn't need a growth area. I see. Does anybody know if we have designated growth areas?
You see what it says in general, but under the law, the government may not.
Where you at?
Second page in the bottom.
Yeah, so we have to at least allow the one structure with an accessory dwelling.
Right.
Yeah.
Do they actually have a. Square footage, or does it go by the town square footage?
So it says you cannot put on greater restrictions.
But I don't even know. Not create that four hundred square. Just five. Well, four hundred square feet, we talked about last week, about, that was.
That's tiny homes.
Homes is four hundred square feet.
But that's not accessory dwellings, I didn't think.
Right, I'm thinking accessory dwellings, they fall under what are?
Yes, which is a minimum of six hundred, but. This is. Size requirement, an accessory dwelling must meet a minimum size of under a ninety square feet.
That's better.
Right, if the technical building codes a standard board under title section, but it comes a different minimum size, the standard applies. The municipality may impose a maximum size for an accessory dwelling.
Ten by twenty. Eighteen by ten, ten by nineteen. I'm gonna fish this. And that's efficient, right? People have clauses, but I think, I think that should be. I think you should keep it at four hundred square feet maximum. The thing is, it's so. It says you can't have restrictions, but can we make them comply with our building codes, which means. If you're gonna, if I'm gonna, if I have a lot and it has a house on it. And that has a septic system, and it's a three bedroom system, and there's three bedrooms in the house already. And I don't want to put an accessory dwelling unit over the top of my garage with another bathroom. I should technically increase the size of that septic system.
Yeah, it actually says it is there.
That they have to, they have my.
They, yeah, they have to meet the.
Water and wastewater goes.
Yeah.
Right, so if I want to put another complete separate unit on my property, then it should meet all the requirements, it should have. The setbacks, it should have the septic, it should have everything that's required for a building brick. That in itself is gonna make it tough for some people, because in a sense, it's like building another building on your property, and today's world, it's not cheap. Well, like stuff is not tied into the public sewer, but I think that's more of a big concern to me is. If there's anything, if they have a lot size and they meet setbacks. They don't have to worry about increasing, you know, it's not really gonna cost them a lot of money, so they're gonna do is tie it into the public sewer. So it's gonna be way easier to put a, like you said, in a garage or an apartment over it, and really with no problems, you're just gonna tighten sewer drain and be done with it. But there's no doubt they're gonna have to meet the setbacks, no matter where it is, in what zone it is. But like you said, if it's, it's in a personal thing, like you said, most places are only septic systems are designed for what you build in that day, not for down the road usually.
So it says here in the general, the setback requirements and dimensional requirements must be the same as the setback requirements and dimensional requirements of a single family dwelling unit, this is if it's attached. This is if it's attached. So what if you're in, well, okay, so you have a building envelope. They have to be built within that building envelope?
Well, what's the goal? Do we wanna restrict the ADU units or do we wanna encourage the?
I don't know, but is that like?
I think that would be up to us.
That part would be up to us.
I think.
Except under subdivision covens, this, this does not exempt subdivision covenant, so those take precedence.
My concern is it could go crazy. Because I, but I can tell you from somebody that owns private properties is that you cannot, even a four hundred square foot ADU, if I build it from the time I pay for it and rent it, that long term, it's years and years to get your money back.
Right, because it has to have a bathroom and it has to have a kitchen.
Yeah.
To be considered an ADU unit.
Right, so even at a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, you know what I mean? You got a hundred and fifty Gs into this, well, we're all smart people that have twelve fifty a month, at tops.
Forever, you're talking about nineteen by ten, you're paying twelve fifty a month, you got problems.
No. I mean, who's gonna live in that? You know what I mean? And who's gonna put a two hundred square foot unit on their property when they could put a four hundred square foot unit on their property? Because it's not gonna be, you know what I mean? Once you're building, you build.
I think that we have to stick with the six hundred square feet because of our ordinance. The four hundred was only for the tiny homes. Our ordinance says six hundred square foot minimum. I see your brain working.
Yeah, you're gonna get challenged on that, because everybody with a.
Well, remember, that's what came up, that's the only thing that came up, so there's a gray area, tiny homes is four hundred, our ones is six hundred. So what you're saying is you can't build a house four oh one to five ninety nine, is, that was the question that came up. So to me, if you can build a tiny home at four hundred, but then our ordinance technically should read four hundred, four oh one, is what you can, is you can start, but you can have a dwelling that size. Because it's stupid that somebody wants a five hundred square foot house, can't build it, because it's not a tiny home and it's not a, not meeting their ordinance. So that's what, you know, that was a valid point last week, I thought, is I think that it should be lower to meet that, because we're not gonna be able to meet the tiny homes is what it is, it's four hundred square feet, you can do it all day long. If you meet all your setbacks and whatever else that you have to meet, so for me, having a lot that I can put nothing on, I would be better off to build a tiny home, because I can do it at four hundred rather than call it an ADU. Right?
I mean, I don't wanna stop everybody's from, from trying to provide some affordable housing. I mean, I don't think, I don't personally wanna stop it, but I do personally wanna regulate it a little bit, because I don't want it to go crazy. But I will tell you the rents range right now, I'm crazy. They're absolutely crazy, but if you let this go crazy, you, nobody's gonna have any rental units, because they're not gonna be worth it. Not when you get three hundred bucks a night for short term. And that's the other concern. I can pull a permit for an ADU, but am I gonna EDU it? Am I gonna do?
Right, is it gonna become bed wrecked? I mean, is it gonna be, you know, you know.
Am I gonna take six fifty more, or am I gonna take three hundred bucks a night? The problem is, is that money, everybody's spring, unfortunately. So here we are, so if you just make it, if you make it tough, and I can tell you, if you, if you stick to the code, if you, even at four hundred square feet, make us meet all the guidelines that our current building code is, which it says, right? It's still gonna be a huge expense. For me, I'm doing it for my employees, so an employee makes me money every single day, so the rent is negligible, I don't, it doesn't matter, but. But for somebody that's just trying, trying to help the community or I just don't see that, I don't see somebody going out and spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to have an ADU unit, because they feel bad that Soundback doesn't have enough employees. That person's gonna invest that money for that short term rental, just to get a dollar's money. How do you, can't tell anybody what they can do with their property, but how do you make it difficult enough so that less than the chances of that? I don't know, it's, I don't think it's a great law, I think it's a horrible law. I think it opens the doors to short term.
No doubt.
So are, let's go back, are you guys want to change?
Well, what, I mean, what do you think about six hundred down to the four hundred?
That's what I was just gonna say, like the.
I mean, to me, I don't know how you cannot make it four hundred because of that two hundred square feet window that is just kinda hanging out in the middle of nowhere that.
Yeah, I don't disagree with.
Is there any way you could ever write in for? Language in the state, if it was a, not a, if it was a year round home, had to meet the six hundred square feet, if it wasn't a year round home or unit that could meet the four hundred square feet.
Yeah, it was originally, oh yeah, it was a year round home for me for years. Okay, so oh, I know what it is. So we did switch it, it says all principal dwelling structures must be at least six hundred square feet. Any accessory, any secondary dwelling structure or apartment with up to two bedrooms must have at least four hundred square foot of total living space. But that's at least, not max. So you're.
I got you.
Yeah, so your house has to be at least six hundred square foot, but you're.
So ADU has to be at least. Has to be at least four hundred.
Now, that works, because now.
It says at least four hundred, we need to, so we need to make it max four hundred.
I think it should be, yeah.
Is that what you're wanting to do?
Right, right, because so that way you could, if you're gonna, if you are gonna rent it up, you know, nightly or whatever. It's basically gonna be for two people unless you're gonna sleep on the floor, right? Because you're not gonna put two or three beds in it.
So this actually is gonna be reading wrong, because so it says at least four hundred square foot of living space there. But in here, it says a accessory dwelling unit must meet a minimum size of a hundred and ninety square foot. So are we allowed to change that to four hundred square foot? So, okay, I was confused. Or because this says four hundred, this says one ninety as a minimum.
Is it four hundred for ADUs or is it for, that's what I.
And all secondary dairy dwelling structures or apartments with two bedrooms must have at least four hundred square foot of living space. That's up to two bedrooms.
That's only a fourteen by twenty.
But this is all very contradictory, as you were saying.
I just think it depends on where we want to go. Towns want to go with the ADUs a week, because if they're a hundred and ninety three square feet, then there's no regulations on.
But can it, can, that's the minimum, can we be more restrictive and say, okay? You know what I mean?
I don't think you can, but what, what does that reads? You could be restricted on the other end, right? Say you can be a maximum of a certain thing, but you can't, if I don't think you can be on the other end, it's one ninety.
So do we need to change that under general requirements? Do we need to change that all secondary dwelling structures or apartments? The minimum is not, instead of four hundred, it's the what, one ninety?
We're still gonna make them go through all the building codes, are we still gonna make them do?
They have to, they have to, because there's no way.
The electrical, you know what I mean? Because those, unfortunately, those are costing current, which is.
I mean, I don't know why you wouldn't do this.
No, you have, you have, there's no way.
No, I understand, but.
Yeah. So I guess that's a question that we need to ask, does it have to be, does the minimum have to be the one ninety? And if it does, then what, we need to look at what the max is then? What, you know what I mean?
And we just have to make it clear, which I think it is, but I think we, I don't know, we have to, we have to put in there or something, whatever, but I think we need to put in something like that these are to be, you know, all their, all the qualifying needs to build, like every other building permit calls, you're gonna meet setbacks, you're gonna meet septic, you're gonna meet so forth down the line, insulation, bar value, everything, right, straight through it. It has to meet our building codes, because then, you know, then one group's playing it by different rules, and we don't.
I think that's the only way to make it, and like I said, I want more people to be able to house employees. I want to try and take the ADU fact, I mean, the short term rental factor out of it, so if you make it a little bit more difficult, if we don't make it too easy. Then I just, I don't like anything about Janet, so that's the way it is.
So this secondary dwelling structures, that's dwelling structure, not just.
And there's two, right, two per prop?
Yeah.
Two units.
Well, the primary dwelling, I haven't read that yet. And it says here, any secondary structure apartment with three or more bedrooms must meet the requirement for the principal. So it's saying that your principal dwelling is I guess I'm confused on, can ADUs be put in a separate section by itself? But no matter what, that's still considered a secondary dwelling accessory, right? It's pretty much this whole change here, it's just, it's just, we just need to get rid of it. So.
The other problem we have with the one ninety three is I don't think you need to pull permit, or you need to fill us in two hundred.
You don't. But you wouldn't have to pull permit if it's, that's like just. Yeah.
That should be clarified, right? Right, so I mean, because it has to have a kitchen, like you said, it has to have a kitchen and a bathroom, this, we have to pull a permit.
So on page thirty twenty five in the green, should all secondary dwelling structures, should that instead say let me go back to the definitions. All accessory structures. So that does not put a limit on, say you build a garage and you put an apartment above it?
Which you can do.
Which, yes, and then have a separate section for accessory dwelling units. Do you see what I'm saying here, Mike, completely?
Well, but I think we're covered, because even before all the state came, you know, the stuff came in, and you wanna build an in-laws apartment over your house, over your garage, you know, you wanna turn it into, you have to pull a permit, you have to, so you have, so it's.
I know, but if we put a max, is that gonna put restrictions on those things now?
Max size.
Does that restrict those kind of? I guess this is a question that we should write down. Am I thinking of it the wrong way?
Well, I don't think you can put a, we're not, we're not, are we talking about putting a max size on these things, you mean?
Yes.
I don't think you can.
It says you can.
Well, I'm not, I, I, I'm sure it says I think you can, but I don't think you can, because then it opens up that area that you, like you just brought up, that now you're telling me I can't put an in-law apartment over my thing, I mean, all the coasts, I don't think you can do that, as far as.
So I know it says in here that, so what's permitted, if, what, the first unit is ten thousand square feet, you just I guess I would love to hear what you're turning at, so.
She seemed very interested.
Yes. But our timeline for that canceled.
But the state does seem that we can't be more restrictive, right?
Yeah, basically, that's all it says, they restricted you, that you can't, it was this bottom section right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything that you would want. It would change the media, if we kept the four hundred square feet as a minimum number. It wouldn't be a max. I think, I mean, well. He's gonna get a ton of pushback.
Your max.
For the, for the max or the minimum.
People are gonna want that two hundred square feet. Four hundred square, whoa.
So the state says one ninety three is the minimum, right?
Yeah, that's the size of a closet.
Right, but they also say we can't restrict it, right?
It doesn't say it's, that's a question, I have wrote it down as a question, so for our next meeting.
So what about our growth areas, are there any place that we restrict growth?
Don't know what any, there could be, I just don't know.
Like I said, that one ninety, I think you're gonna have to go with that, but I don't, but we need to make sure that, like I said, each house requirements that need to make every other house need to meet. And just make it a big old base with. Bathroom.
Yeah.
No kitchen, so using bathrooms and kitchens, that thing, you know what I mean, it's not.
Yeah, basically says if we don't allow this. Then we can be challenged instead of.
Yeah.
Town does not have growth areas defined by section forty-three, forty-nine A. Subsection one paragraph A or B. Does not have any areas served by water sewer does not. Need to comply with LD thirty-three, can you read that? If a town does not have growth areas, have to find by section forty-three, forty-nine dash A. Subsection one paragraph A or B, and does not have any areas served by water or sewer. Does it need to comply with LD two thousand and three? These communities will not be subject to. Would not have areas that are required to about two forty minutes.
You would still have to comply with the one additional unit, but you didn't have to do the four, because you don't have the growth area.
So that areas that are not provided water and sewer by the municipality? Is that our residential?
This is water, it's water. It adds in wells. It's not just limited to. The municipal services.
Well, it's all from the growth plan, right? Isn't it six, right, does it not have a growth plan, right?
Compensate plan seeking, defining consistency. In relation to chapter two, where he should meet. Since a consequence, comprehensive plan is not a regulatory document. Of the three would not create any additional requirements, so if this is adopted. In the municipality would have to be consistent. Compensate plan and.
I like here that we can get funding from the housing opportunity program to develop new wardens is.
Yeah.
And D E C D is.
This might seem. Section four. Five, six required within fair reason of adequate water and weed for the services. What about this, this is a question, what about municipalities concerned with? That while in specific housing development, meaning on a nearly certain water quality. Cumulative impact of new development made so in a way. That it did not prior, which means. Says, as was true prior, that passes, will be thirty-two communities are free to take regulatory actions as appropriate. For protection of natural resources. Or existing water systems. This can include changes to zoning districts. To limit where housing is permitted, changes to law sign requirements, or the creation of an impact free system. System with state law to fund environmental water quality protection.
An impact fee system, what's that?
Free money? No, but that might let us limit something in Shoreland, Shoreland, Shore.
We have to meet all the other restrictions.
Right.
Preferably you can put an apartment over your house and show everything else.
Does that affect your thirty percent?
Right? Well, now that's going off window, because if you have a good enough lawyer, you do it by law coverage. Right? Seven three is a prime example of that. Those people ain't gonna be able to sit and grill upside their house.
Surely, I am so surprised.
Sure.
Or land. You would have to require about thirty percent.
I think we should look into.
Yeah. I close the workshop. First. A public hearing for fifty-five Carey Road. I'm guessing there are not, nobody's in Zoom. Fifty-five Carey Road is a conditional use permit for what used to be the gender brand, and the reason for the conditional use permit, there's no change in use. Is just there's no conditional use. Application on record. So we can do a conditional use. That's why that's. But again, there was no change in use. If I have any questions, even. Alright, I will close that public hearing for fifty-five Carey Road at six oh four. And open the public hearing for Taylor Farm Road. Last week, we looked at the application as complete. You guys wanna give us an overview of what is going on?
Yeah, um, this is a proposed shop lot. Right now, we use it kind of as a lay down yard, we just have materials out. So we're looking to the future of building a shop. Where we can build inside and having storage alongside, and then having. Storage for landscaping materials along the back. This would be built in stages, we'd build the shop first, and then the storage on the sides, and then. Out back for the landscaping materials. Um, we're not looking to build right away, but we wanna have this in place when we're ready to.
So where you're gonna keep the landscaping materials, is there gonna be any kind of covering on it, or it just gonna be open?
It's just gonna be open, it's basically gonna be concrete walls along the back, and then. Concrete wall dividers in between, so we need to gravel.
So on the previous plan, it showed paint room, paint booth, storage rooms. So I can tell you from a person that has one. There's a lot of flammable stuff in it, right? So obviously, I'm across the street from a fire hydrant. Would you ever consider doing any type of sprinkler system in there?
We haven't discussed it, we would look at doing a sprinkler system in that area, we are looking to build with ICX. So those rooms will be completely fireproofed.
The other thing is handsome well drilling, who does our wells, is gonna drill a larger well there, so we can put in just a larger pump.
Yeah.
And a fire hydrant type situation.
Yeah.
I personally have told the fire department not to, if my building is on fire. That's how much of a hazard. I think it can be.
Yeah.
Cuz the paint will build up, and then, you know, it's just, I just.
We're also planning on having a room strictly, that's in case, that is ICF and concrete. That is specifically for that type of substance with left fans.
Do you ever foresee any commercial sale of your products, storage part, would you ever be open to sell? To the public?
No, we're just gonna build. Our spec homes in there. Move like, move a little too late for what's on the lots right there, so, a lot.
So in the zoning, does that build in set in the industrial section? It doesn't. Does it say in the residential?
It's commercial, it's commercial.
Commercial.
Yeah, and it's on a commercial lot, right?
So that commercial line is adjacent to the airport, and the opposite side of the road must be the residential, is that?
Yeah, yes.
No? No, I can tell you from somebody that has one, they're valuable.
Yeah. I, we used to have one, oh, I miss the beer.
My only concern is, and we're gonna address it when we renovate our building, we are doing a sprinkler system.
Yeah.
Throughout that left side of the building. Just because my fear is if one of our firefighters ever walked in there unsuspectingly. It could burn and go over.
Yeah, I agree.
I thought I had a zoning map I wanted to show you. Like, I think at the end of where this property is. That's where it turns into industrial.
So, behind this property is industrial with the airport, and then there's another, to one side, there's a ten acre commercial lot. And to the other side is all the additional commercial, also the same size, it's this one. Across the street is residential, and then really, it's only one lot that's across the street that's residential, and then behind that is the open space in the subdivision.
Does anybody have any questions? Close that public hearing. Open the regularly scheduled meeting at six oh nine, please stand with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one individual liberty and justice for all. Alright, another call. I don't, there's no adjustments to the agenda. I'd like to speak on a non-agenda item. Alright, review minutes from September fourteenth. Two, and my apologies, I didn't include this in the last meeting. West been in motion, I have a second. Your second. Any discussion? Was in favor, unanimous. Okay, the meeting minute from October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
I made the motion, made seven meeting minutes from October twenty-second, five, twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
You made the motion. Have a second. Your second, any discussion? All those in favor? Respondents. There's no respondents. There is no new business. Oh, can I go back? Under adjustments to the agenda. We put in. To vote in changes. To signs in chapter thirty-eight, as discussed in the workshop. We'll add that under, after the Taylor farm. Okay. Uh, continuing business, uh, conditional use permit application for fifty-five Carey Road. Yeah, we have to go through this whole thing. I make the motion that applicant has standing to present this application as owner.
Please, the applicant is here.
Oh.
The owner, Lacy, yeah, the owner is me.
Okay, Lacy, sorry. Thank you. I amended to say Lacy.
Second.
Well, second, any discussion? All those in favor, unanimous. I make question, planning board has authority, consider this application, but. By the proposed use being listed in section thirty-eight point four point six of the Regent town code. I made much of a second, any discussion? All those in favor? One note on this, and we just gotta remember it, because we're changing hands or whatever. Is that, under that part, we need to make sure that we have the date that the code enforcement officer sends it to us. Or determine that it would go there. Number three, uh, we'll go through these, and determining the proposed use impact upon the surrounding properties. As required by section thirty-eight point six point three point one of the Regent town code. The planning board talk us through the following, I make a motion that the size of proposed use compared with surrounding uses is not. Going to have an impact. On surrounding properties. Any motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Why we just do it all those together, I make a motion that there is no impact on the senior business. Any discussion? Those in favor? Make a motion that, uh. There's no more intensity for this, uh. Restaurant as compared to surrounding areas or uses.
One second.
Any discussion, all those in favor? Make a motion that there is no, uh, impact from potential, uh, noise. nuisances. For a second. Any second, any discussion? All those in favor? Did you say what?
Well, there's a bar.
But it's compared to surrounding areas, there's.
Right, no, you're right.
All those in favor? And make a motion that there is no unusual physical characteristics.
One second.
Discussion, those in favor? Alright. The planning board, I make a motion, the planning board finds the proposed project. Does not have significant adverse impact upon the value of quiet possession of surrounding properties greater than the usual in that zoning district.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor? So I make a motion that proposed use will not have a impact on the capacity of the new sp- So I make a motion that the proposed use will not have a impact on the capacity of the municipality or other facilities serving this proposed use. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's not in short line. I make a motion that we grant the conditional use permit for 55 Carey Road. Any discussion? All those in favor? Allowed to conditional use permit application for Taylor Farm. Signs. Just get a sign. Somebody else wanna make a motion? Make a motion? I talk about any copy.
I can.
Alright, so the front control Taylor Farm Road. I make a motion that the applicant has standing to present this application as owner. Any discussion? All those in favor? Planning board has authority, I make a motion, the planning board has authority to consider this application by the proposed use being listed in section 38.4.6 of the Regent's Town Code.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All those in discussion, all those in favor? So let's just go through it. Do we feel like there's a, an impact on the size of proposed use compared to surrounding uses? Yes, no? I would say no. Is there an impact on scenic vistas?
No.
Is the intensity of proposed use compared to surrounding uses really isn't in the surrounding uses? No. Potential generation of nuisances. Let me ask a question. You're using equipment outside.
Well, the shop. Most of the equipment will be in the shop. All the heavy equipment, it'll either just go in and be parked for storage over the winter time. Or in the barn, but the reason we're doing the ICS is so there's no.
No, there'll be minimal use on the actual shop lot of the heavy equipment. It'll be more transformative to job sites.
But I would say no. Is there any unusual physical characteristics of the site? No. So I'll make a motion, the planning board finds the proposed project does not have significant adverse impact upon the value of quiet possession of surrounding properties greater than the usual in that zoning district, which is commercial. I'm motion the second, any discussion?
I just, no, I do, I just, I just. I don't like the fact that it's like across the street from a residential side. I don't like the zoning of that property anyways. None of it.
So we have a full tree barrier along the road. And our plan is to have a, I mean, the front, uh, front facade of the shop will look like an old barn and then the office in front will look like any of our houses.
So that wasn't meant towards you. I don't like the zoning of that property.
Right.
I don't like the industrial with commercial and then residential. And then that property is 200 and something acres total.
Yeah.
And it's not zoned, in my opinion, properly. It hasn't never been. It's not anything to do with you. You're doing what you can do on that lawn.
Right.
But I do, like, moving that agri out of the back of the yard with the backup logs, I know it's gonna have some effect because at six o'clock in the morning, I hear, but I live, I built my house there. I had the backup logs going off, so.
Yeah.
We just, just keep it to a minimum the best you can. Remember, the kids are still sleeping at six. I know we wanna get going in the morning, but.
The other thing is, we not only build the houses right there, we just wanna blanket all the walls, which is down near soundproof. They should have to put air hammers in them to have airflow, but we have talked with the residents who have purchased those buildings and they are okay with it.
Um, one thing that we can put in place, I know she said there's already a tree barrier, but just putting that as a condition that there remains a tree barrier.
Yeah, we're planning on leaving that anyway.
So they have received letter from the fire department. They have to. So looking at number four, and determining the capacity of municipal or other facilities serving the proposed use, the ability of traffic movement. Pedestrian safety, we don't have to worry about that. Capacity of public street network, it's at the private road, it's a dead end. You're all fine with wastewater disposal, water supply system. Stormwater drainage system.
That's a pretty flat lot, isn't it?
It goes uphill. We're kind of cutting into the hills to make it fully flat and it's gonna be all gravel, so the water's gonna be treated, so.
We're creating swells, so it converts itself into the ditch, which is at the front, right on the road. And that goes to the retention pond on the corner of Taylor Farm.
Right, in the middle, like still we'll re-track.
Oh.
Yeah, which I lost.
I didn't think about that.
Thank you very much. I raised that track. It was pretty fun.
Uh, and he's, they received a letter from the fire department saying there's no concerns there. So I make a motion, the planning board finds the proposed project does not create any hazards based on inadequate facilities. Second, any discussion? All those in favor? So I would like to make a motion to add a condition that on the roadside of the property, Taylor Farm roadside, that there remain a tree buffer. This is one of the, um, we actually put that condition on the other commercial property right down the street.
That's fine.
Yeah. That was a motion.
I'll second that. Good, sorry.
Get Jerry now.
All three of them said that at the same time.
Go back to old conditions, probably said it violated that.
Well, not doing this.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we grant this applica, the conditional use application for Taylor Farm Road with the noted conditions. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. And I don't have a signature page because I wrote on my. That'll be checked up, ready to be done.
Huge, huge asset. The, oh, I can't, I can't. I literally would have been designing it for years.
Oh, yes, sir.
I can't, I'm late. I never, I never knew how much of an asset it would be until I had one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my entrepreneurial sense.
Just a place to put stuff. It's just, uh. It's a rental building next to it. That's right. The store just ran next to it.
Tree buffer. Oh, we're not done. Alright, so we did an adjustment to the agenda to go in the changes that we had discussed on signs. So I make a motion to add in the definite, add the definitions back in as presented in our current chapter 38 undersigns. Jerry second? Any discussion from the board? Yes.
Could you be more specific of which definitions you put in this file?
They, I just said that they're currently chapter 38 undersigns. It's very clear what's in there.
So you're just, your motion is to maintain the existing definitions of signs.
Yes.
In the sign section of chapter 38.
Yes, because under, uh, in the draft, chapter 38, they're not in there. And if you recall, at the meeting we had with the select board and planning board, Sam had mentioned seeing it on another ordinance, another county ordinance, but we already had it. It was just taken out. So what we're doing is just putting it back into the draft.
We make an amendment or an adjustment to the others.
Yes. Or we have to vote on that first. Are you leaving it by the definitions as well? Do you want it removed from the? No, we'll just leave it there too. Okay, any other discussion on that? All those in favor? So another discussion was, I have to look at it again. Yeah, it was, I was just trying to find the page. And I just wasn't sure if it was under the drafts or if it was under the. So I make a motion to add undersigns, page 3879 of the drafts, point, section point three. Add, no source of illumination shall exceed 800 lumens. In parentheses, 100 watt for incandescent bulbs and 17 watt for LED bulbs. I have everything. 1800 lumens.
Yeah.
Yeah. You heard 1800, I heard 18. That was my motion. Uh, hold on. Any discussion from the board? No, go ahead.
So is this existing stuff or is this new stuff you called?
So this is new. This, the 1800 lumens is actually under lights in chapter 38. We're just also putting it under, um, section point three illuminated signs. We're just adding it to that section as well.
So could you repeat that for me slowly for the public?
No source of illumination shall exceed 1800 lumens. Which is equal to 100 watts for incandescent bulbs. And 17 watt for LED bulbs.
And that applies to what?
Lights.
So.
So, so.
Not signs, lights?
Well, the, it's the illuminated signs from like the externally illuminated signs, yes. Yes.
Signs.
Yes. Alright, any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
So are you gonna follow these things to the workshop?
Absolutely.
Workshop, that's what your intent is.
Absolutely. It says the next meeting is August 24th. I can go back to. When was the next?
Next week.
So it's supposed to be, uh, you want the actual meeting? Not our actual meeting.
It's supposed to be the 16th, wasn't it?
It is the.
Yeah, that's the workshop.
The workshop is the 16th. So our next meeting is going to be the 16th. And that is, I think they said six to eight, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, six to eight. Our meeting that is November 25th.
Third. You usually cancel it.
I'm gonna cancel it. Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna cancel that.
You second?
Yes, I do.
Second, we canceled November 23rd.
25th. Oh, 23rd. I'm looking at January.
Look at November.
All those in favor?
We're meeting next weekend, next Wednesday, 6th, workshop.
Yes, next Wednesday. In January, it's on Monday. Alright, I make a motion to adjourn meeting at 6:34.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.